All right, this brings the order to the Rules Committee meeting regarding hiring of a consultant for a racial polarization study. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss the process of which we will use to hire a consultant. Passage of resolution a couple of weeks back, council has agreed to hire consultant so long as there is a super majority agreement to hire a particular consultant. So with that, anybody got anything they want to add to the process, ideas?
I had talked a bit a little bit about this, going through just a process of getting resumes. When we get resumes together, do we then sort through and come out with like a top three? And if we do that, then do we go to interviews, maybe zoom, something like that, to determine who will come out top of that list, negotiating the cost, all of those kinds of things come into play. Then, of course, when we're interviewing them, what are we looking for? What kind of questions do we have? What kind of information do we need from each group? I also have another group that I have the name of earlier. I didn't think we were going to be passing out resumes today, otherwise I would have it already, but there was another group that we'll add to the list as well.
So, Mr. Penn?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I agree with Austin McGregor that we need to, of course, you know, maybe choose, you know, three top candidates and maybe then from there have those meetings, the interviews. I think we have to make sure that it's important who we choose for this position at, of course, because it's important, so we need to do this on very carefully.
All right. Mr. Daze, I agree with Ms. Gregory and Mr. Penn that as to the general procedure, and my suggestion would be that we adopt some kind of timeline for this, that, you know, by X date we will have gathered all the resumes of the entities that anyone's heard of or is interested in this, and that my suggestion would be that the committee meets again to call through those and come up with, say, three, three to five, that we would then move on to the next stage, which would be scheduling interviews with them, Zoom interviews are fine, schedule Zoom interviews with them, and then subsequent to that, I guess we would, there'd have to be a resolution come before the council to actually engage a firm.
Contract.
That resolution would have to gather five votes.
Right, contract, final contract.
So I have, I think the answer in this committee meeting is kind of the scope for, what are we after? What do we want to define by way of putting a proposal or request for proposal or something out there in the public so we can get as many responses as we want? Does anybody, you know, I think Mr. Carroll put this on the agenda officially for passage, or CJ, that's what I'm offering, what are we after with this polarization study? What way of data are we requesting from folks?
Is this a general question?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Just in general, purposely for revisionary and anization of both, and whoever, you know, we choose, they need to have done and specialize in, you know, both of them, you know, and that's what we definitely will be looking at.
Do you, do you get a polarization study for a specific political purpose, or is it kind of, or is it just a study that says that, that, you know, this, this area, either the city is this political entity is racially polarized?
Or do they just come back from the study, say, there's one who's being polarized, something elections patterns, that kind of thing?
All right, so I'd ask for the scope of work from somebody else, and it looks like we've got something generally that defines the scope of work, what someone would do if they were hired, at least this person would do. It says, "The intention is to develop an expert opinion on number one, whether racially polarized voting exists in the city of Mobile, number two, whether the pattern of racially polarized voting is legally significant, and three, whether there are any recommended adjustments to any pending district proposals that the council is considering for its new maps." So if you take just that, those three items of the scope of work to your point, they seem somewhat subjective depending on who does it. So if somebody has, you know, this is an opinion essentially we're asking for someone.
These are a lot we can get away from, I mean, it's an opinion.
It's an opinion no matter what.
No matter what.
Right, to define in my opinion, what, what, what opinion we're after, you know, what is the information we want somebody to give to this?
I keep, I don't need to interrupt you, but I mean, that's, but you read it, said it pretty good.
Said it pretty good.
You're sorry?
Sir.
As I was a deeper advisor for law settlements, what is your recommendation, what we should
You know, I would send out a, and it doesn't have to be anything fancy, but I would send out a request for proposal to whatever names you know of, that you're interested in, of people, and you could also put it on, you know, the website, and say, "This is what we're looking for," and you can just, you know, copy what, what he just said, and please submit a proposal on this with your cost, timeline, et cetera, by such and such date so you can get the responses back, and then narrow it down layer. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
If we put something out, say, you got to these folks, or to some other folks, Council McGregor, Councilwoman McGregor's got somebody, I've got somebody, and I'd like to send a request out too, but if we're going to find the scope, let's just say we take this right here, I don't want to, so we want you to do these three, three things for us, we want it done by this date, no later than this date, and we have a maximum budget of whatever, and then they can kind of respond to that, kind of opinion that's legal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Daze made a great point. Would you read that there?
Yeah. Number three, whether there are any recommended adjustments to any pending district proposals that the council is considering for its new maps.
I'll give you a second, but can you just read that? The second?
The second.
The second one is not the voting, right?
Yes, whether the pattern of racially polarized voting is legally significant.
Okay, so with them, they, we would like to also see what they went and researched, not just their opinion, but also the data from, based on that. So, because, you know, if you're saying their opinion, yeah, they give their opinion, but we would like to also see what they gather.
That probably would be in the R and B, you have to kind of spell out to, you know, where would the information come from, how would you analyze it, what kind of systems do you use, you know, all that sort of thing, I guess, and then let's say, with the information back, they would have to share it with us, obviously, but yeah, I mean, we need to know how they would go about doing this work that they intend to do. And then probably on the cost, we would need them to give us their proposal, and if it's more than what we think we want paid, I'm like, you know, just to negotiate.
It goes into, or that goes into calculation, but they, or Daze, sure.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, but they need to give us the proposal first, what they're going to do, how we're going to do it, and how much they intend to spend, you know, and then send it to us and we can negotiate.
Well, that's, I was turning.
Still, I got the answer.
Same question, but you didn't answer the question.
What are you looking for? Read the question for me.
Yeah, the question is, what should we be looking, what should we be asking for?
Have they done this before? Are they, where have they done it before? Have they done it in any similarly situated cities? What their background and qualifications are? I think you're going to get a wide variety of people, I'm sure there's a wide variety out there, but, you know, I don't, I've never really talked to one of these guys. I talked to this guy once, I'm just not sure what all they do, to be honest with you, other than what he stated here, the proposal.
Well, I think the question is, you know, how are you qualified to do this work? Is there credentials, you know, which anytime you send a proposal for any sort of project, you've got to tell people, like, who is the one to be selected, what is your background, what is your history, you know, experience with doing things like this, so they, I guess we need to spell it out, but you know.
Is that a question or is this more?
And what all should we be looking for?
Still more, yours is, you know, say, more.
Yeah, and what all should we be looking for?
In the board.
The guy that I talked to in February said he would come in, take the data from the city elections for the past however many years, which I think could be, that could be defined, you know, ten years, twelve years, twenty years, however far back you want to go, he would have to get that information, I guess, from the clerk's office, as far as the data from the elections, and then he would take that and then do whatever they do with it, and also is going to review the pending maps and, you know, district lines and all that hit, that were before the council, which right now there's basically two options for that, and come up with his solution, or opinion, yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Corey?
I think it was, I just have a hundred things going on, I didn't want to hijack you.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Arlidge, I think, all right, the next thing is the time frame. So, we're, these are on the agenda to vote June 21st, I'm not mistaken, so we intend to vote on June 21st, then what's the absolute hard deadline, August?
12th.
August 12th. So we want to push this thing all the way to the limit, August 12th is the absolutely hard stop.
I would recommend the end of July to get this going.
So proposals due back, I mean, a proposal's got to be due way before that.
Yeah, the proposal was.
Works.
Start at the end of one.
Yeah, got you.
So the report has to be delivered by August 1st.
That gives enough time for a lot, I mean, deliberation, obviously, that gives about a week, so may make sense to go, you know, back up.
First is, if, if with people doing this racial polarization study, and doing that in one or two weeks.
I say, the guy I spoke to could have got, he said he could get it in eight days. Now, the price was commensurate with a turnaround like that, but it could be done.
If they know what they're going to do, turn around this two weeks. So we should do it.
Early part of July, yeah.
It's that.
You still have to find out, you know, which one we want to choose.
Yeah, because we still have to do all the interviews, we've got to select, so.
So, look, so we go back, so we make our decision on.
August 12th is the date.
Yeah, August 1st, we said we want to vote back on August 1st. So, and then, so we would want to engage, we went two weeks back from that, we'd be looking at, yeah, we'd be looking at the 18th as the date by which we have engaged this entity. Maybe the 18th of July, maybe we should give it another week, maybe we should say the 11th.
I would say the 12th, which is a Tuesday.
Okay, the 12th, so we have to make our decision by the 12th.
The scope of work, vote or dilution, or diluting of votes?
So if we make our decision, if we make our decision by July 12th, on due date, then we have to have the responses to the RFPs, let's say we had, right? No, 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 not responses, no, we got to have the interviews, we're going to have the interviews.
So it'll be the 5th. 5th, we will hold interviews of, say, top, top three, July 12th, engagement deadline.
Can we not do that?
Ah, yeah, that's probably, you know, Mr. Daze. We'll go back to the 18th, engagement, 12th, hold interviews. Everybody agree with that?
Decision by the 18th and interviews on the 12th?
Yep, and then, then we could give the deadline for the response to the RFPs, that could be, that could be.
August 5th.
Response is to RFPs.
How long do you have, RFP, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, 30 days. So if we put it out tomorrow, so that means, that seems like a long time.
It does.
Yeah, we need to shorten it to two weeks.
I mean, this is May 11th.
Yeah.
So say, I mean, if, if the RFP, I mean, again, it doesn't have to be some long thing, that could be ready by the end of the week, at least, unless you, I mean, what else, it's not going to be, how much you have to say in an RFP.
We're going to describe it to the scope of work in RFP. So we got, I mean, if we agree today that the scope of work will be items one, two, and three on this, we want to see the data, and we want to see the dilution of vote, what we prefer to have.
It's like, it's like when one group is moved from another area to another area, the votes diluted in this area, are they capable of voting out there where they are? Our problem in mobility is that we've got so many people that don't have a solid rooted home, that the IDs do not show their actual address, so they can't vote out where they're supposed to, they come back downtown to vote, and then at the vote, at the vote polls, when they zip their ID in, that address doesn't exist anymore, so they're casting in provisional ballots because the address doesn't exist on the street, so they can't vote. That is a voter, a dilution issue that we have here because of people non-riddled, and it exists.
How many people are we talking about?
And it exists in District 2 because of people being moved from RFP that have not gone and changed their IDs because they've had them for so long, it exists with some people that came out of Air Force and even some out of Josephine Island that live in different places now, and still carry the same addresses that they did, when it comes time of up, they just can't.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Uh, Mr. Arlidge, can you read the resolution we passed to have this hiring of this consultant? What did we pass?
The council shall hire a consultant to perform and provide a racial polarization study of city mobile municipal election voting patterns, provided however that the consultant to be hired to provide such studies shall be approved by a super majority of the council.
All right, so my question would be is that this scenario that Councilman Carroll discussed, is that part of a racial polarization study? Do we have any examples where that, that is used?
Racial polarization studies often include voter dilution, they include a whole lot of other things. I would just simply ask, if, if we're not familiar with what a polarization study does, then I would simply ask, what's normal scope of work instead of us guessing here, because some of us are guessing as to what the scope of work should be, and you get a whole lot more out of a racial polarization study than just who's voting, why they didn't vote, where they're voting, I mean, I mean, even ethnicity, so where they live, how they congregated in neighborhoods come into play, where they're going, all those things come out of the racial polarization study that's for.
I think it may make sense here to not rush a scope of work in identifying whether, I think maybe this committee ought to reconvene, say, what we can do next week, if y'all have life on, on June 7th, or we can go to the 14th.
Well, the one thing I don't.
Everyone prepared with a, what you want this polarization study to include.
The only thing I don't want to see is this drug out so long that we start getting a tangle of an audience, I mean, I think it's time to get some resolution on this, I'm ready to vote, Jim, so, I'm ready, so.
Okay, well, then with that in mind, I think it makes sense, let's let this committee reconvene on June 7th with our committee members and anyone else who's interested in putting forward some modification to the scope, or what they think the scope of work should include.
I just want, whoever we hire, I want to start at the beginning with no preconceived ideas and no end in mind. They start at the beginning to determine whether there's racial polarization in the city of Mobile, they're not headed towards any preconceived solution, and that's going to be one of the questions I have for whoever we talk, we talk about occasionally.
Yeah, I was going to hold up and not say nothing. Jesus, man, just a racial polarization, I should read some of my emails from this past week, racial polarization exists in this city, emails that tell me we don't want poor people downtown, we don't want black people downtown, we don't want black people here, it exists, I have it in writing, some of them didn't even hide their names when they sent the emails, so if you say that it's not racial polarization in this city, then you got a problem, it's here, it's here. Now, I've shared some of those emails with some of y'all, and if you care to think that it doesn't exist, I've heard even council members say that we've come so far, but it is clear, my wife and I had people stop us on the street calling us names Friday night. If you don't think we need it, we need it, and it needs to cover everything. Now, I've shared some of these emails with some of you, including the administration and staff from this past week, where it was blatant, we don't want black people in our downtown, you've had a stranglehold in our city for so long, it's time for it to stop in the polarization study.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. Can we keep the politics to a minimum, let's figure out the day.
But this, this, what was just described as not racial polarization, has nothing to do with racial polarization, has everything to do with racism, and the two are absolutely different. Racial polarization is how people voted, along the demographic lines of where they live and who they voted, period, and that's what racial polarization outlines, and that's what it should show us. Yes, racism existed, it's always existed, and will continue to exist because we have some very small-minded people, and a small majority of these people are always going to continue to say things that are going to hurt other groups of people, and that's never going to stop because it's human nature, unfortunately, but racial polarization has everything to do with voting, period, in the demographic line.
Mr. Smalls, got the floor.
Uh, Mr. Arlidge, is it possible that when the committee convenes on next week, that you can bring back a bit of things that you recommend that we should vote for and also pass, and especially during the interview process?
I think it does, so, so, all those studies have been done, they've shown what the voting is for, they've done it.
Would that be helpful?
Mr. R.
Yes, sir, Mr. Daze.
Polarization is when you got two equal forces, one on each side of the other, both one positive and one negative, that when you put up against one to the other, it repels and retracts the other. So polarization is, when you say racial polarization, this time I can truly tell you that we are polarized, because there is one group or a group that wants one thing that is strong, another group that wants something else that is also strong, but when you try to put them together, they repel each other. So, but, 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 it is, it's just like cockroaches, when you see one, it's ten, and when you see ten is a hundred, they hiding under the dog on the B boards, I'm sorry again, they hiding under the baseboards, they're hiding in the dirt, but they're everywhere, so you see one is more.
All right, hey, look, if we could, if we could keep this meeting, this is a business meeting, really discuss, to get to the bottom of this, using this tool that the council passed, everyone, we agree that if we're going to hire someone, need to figure out who we hire and how we're going to hire them, so if we could limit the discussion to that, I think it'd be most helpful to everyone. Mr. Penn, you got something?
Oh, no, I thought, say, is that good what you just said?
All right, so, so as far as scheduling goes, scope of work, Mr. Arlidge, I believe next week, you'll be working very hard throughout the weekend to make sure that we have some examples of scope of work of a racial polarization study, and bring those to us. Timeline after that, y'all want to just discuss that later to try to narrow it down?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, if there's some suggestion that comes a little too late, then it could be done sooner.
It could be done sooner.
What I have is July 5th deadline for responses to whatever we put out. Okay, and then July 12th, hold interviews on the top three, July 18th, engage, engagement deadline to hire someone, and, and the suggestion was maybe, maybe that all could happen a little sooner, rather than July 5th deadline for response could actually be sent.
Did the time come in?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
August, July, we got that, February, August 12th, 18th, 12th, so waiting till July is too long, we need to have someone under contract and working in June, and they need to have information back to us sometime by the end of June if we can make that happen. We're encroaching on the 12th, and depending on who you like and what they tell you their availability are, that, that's going to determine the end date, so looking at scheduling, your schedule's too long, it needs to narrow back, we need to bring this to conclusion sooner.
Honestly, and it may end up saving us money if we do.
Well, and normally in a racial polarization study, it costs more, but quicker you do it, and the cost is reduced, but the more time that's allotted, but we need to bring it to conclusion quicker than later, we need to get to conclusion this month.
All right, Mr. Arlidge.
I'm gonna put out two things. It's really August ninth because the twelfth is a Friday, unless you're gonna call a special meeting for that Friday.
Well, I thought it was the eighteenth. That's what I was at, out of my head. I couldn't figure out more than four to five.
No, he said twelfth, and it is, that is six months. But the council meeting's on that Tuesday, which is the ninth of August. And then, I would say as far as the timing of after you send out your RFP, give them two weeks to respond. That's plenty of time to say, yeah, I'm interested. Here's my proposal.
Okay, so here's my suggestion. On next Tuesday, we'll hold a committee meeting for Rules Committee. That'll be on the seventh of June. By the tenth of June, clerk's office will put out a request for proposal on the tenth. That'll be that following Friday. We will allow for two weeks.
But, but this is professional services, right?
Yeah, it should be just R and B, shouldn't it?
Right. Should be, should be a R and Q, not a R and P. Because they don't have to produce anything. All they need to do is give us a request.
Right, we're not, we're getting it out.
Right. So, it's a RFQ, which then reduces the time to a week's response. So, your RFQ could go out on the tenth, response by the seventeenth. Contract by the twenty-fourth, response to us by the, no later than, I guess, the eighth.
What are the, what are the interviews?
Well.
I think more than a week's time for a response is in line. I mean, you know, if we're gonna put out a request for qualifications, we want it to go out broadly, I think, you know, more than a week makes sense. But after two weeks, that's what council attorneys suggested to us.
Exactly. Normally, companies hold a standard RFQ, which would be the basis of the response.
It can be whatever y'all want. I mean, if it's called R and P, RFQ, mine is the same thing. You're just asking for them to propose something to you. And whatever time y'all want, there's no rule.
Okay.
I thought we, I thought we agreed with it. August first date, the people who report this.
Well, we're voting on the twelfth or the ninth. I think there needs to be some time for everybody to get. I mean, just for true transparency for me, I want everybody to be aware of that. I want the whole city to see what that say. And a week's time to get that out sometimes is like, even though we're gonna post it all over the internet and everywhere else, I think we need more time to be totally transparent.
Keeping in mind, we all have to agree, five votes on who we're gonna hire as well. There needs to be a little bit of time there for that deliberation.
That's because we might have any racial polarization study done before.
Hey, so, so, so how much time?
Please, Sergeant.
I tend to agree with Mrs. Carroll on this one. That the sooner the better for this committee. What I do with, we're gonna put out the R and B on the tenth of June, following our meeting. Allow the responses to come back all the way through the twenty-fourth. If the deadline received responses, then we can reconvene on a Tuesday right thereafter. So, we can go, we can go to the twenty-eighth.
Why don't you have a deadline on the twenty-third?
Right, maybe.
Are you talking, are you talking June?
June, in June. So, in June, we'll put out the R and B on the tenth, and then we'll let the responses go a full two weeks through the twenty-fourth. And then we'll convene for our normal council meeting on the twenty-eighth, in which we could interview all of that short, pretty short window to get people to show up here. We may need that one. So, okay, on, on twenty-eighth, we'll have top three interviews. Following week is Independence Day weekend, or it'll be July fourth on Monday. Convene on the fifth. What do you think about that, Mr. Dave? All right, July fifth, make our selection.
Or we can interview earlier July fifth and then make a selection. They, and then call back with a special. We got to, we have to.
Make the decision same day?
That's possible.
Top three interviews on the fifth.
We're just saying if they have to fly them on the other side.
We can use that note for a day for those who can't make it on the twenty-eighth, if that's necessary. All right, make the selection on the fifth. And then the responses, I mean, then the report due back from them, I say we give it a three-week buffer. I mean, it still puts us kind of close to that August first date.
Yeah.
To August second.
Twenty-sixth.
That's the twenty-sixth, twelfth. We can go, we can push it to July twenty-sixth. Record produced by the twenty-sixth. Don't keep it up with all this back there? We can adjust as needed. If something comes up, we can always discuss it next week at our Rules Committee meeting. Scope of work, everybody be prepared for Rules Committee meeting discussion next week. Cost, anybody want to discuss what, I mean, you want to set like an up to amount?
Well, if we give them an up to amount, they're gonna let you tell you.
Okay.
Anybody have any clue how much these cost?
About fifty thousand is what, is what this gentleman here. I don't know if that's up to them.
That's probably a rushed job, too, right?
It was.
That's on the eight days. I didn't give any.
Yeah, that was the eight day, and he also, I heard secondhand. He said that might be negotiable.
It's just, the longer, the more time they have, the better. We're late again going this, the, the less time they, the explosion prices.
All right, any, just every, if everybody could just give some thought to the calendar, you know, how long this is gonna play out and the dates that I just put for. I'll put them in an email. What information are we after? What info was needed to, you know, get done with what you want to get done? What are we gonna do with the information? What a proposal looks like? How much does it cost? What are you willing to accept? What election data is used for the study? You know, how many, how many years backwards or what elections and all that stuff? If y'all could all give some thought to that in preparation for next week's meeting. Anything else before the Rules Committee? All right, Rules Committee, Mr. Carroll.
What was that proposed timeline again?